Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, October 7th. I now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please invite everyone to join in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And would you now please call the roll?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and give it to the city manager. If participating remotely, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at an appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press *9 to raise your hand and when called upon, please press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Our first agenda item is ceremonial, and I suspect that most people in this room are here for that. I am here to present the Mayor's Quarterly Hero Award to Lindsay Reich. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of presenting the Quarterly Mayor's Hero Award to someone whose dedication has profoundly impacted the health and well-being of our community. That person is Lindsay Reich, the founder of Warm Water Wellness and the driving force behind the reopening of the Mickelson Arthritis and Rehabilitation Pool. For decades, as you all know, the Warm Waters at the Mickelson Pool have served as a source of comfort and healing for people with chronic pain, mobility issues, and those recovering from surgery. It was a unique therapeutic source on the peninsula, providing relief for those in need. But in 2020, during the pandemic, the pool closed its doors, leaving many without a critical lifeline. That is where Lindsay's incredible journey begins. Lindsay, who herself has battled an autoimmune disorder and found daily relief in the Warm Waters of the pool, refused to let this invaluable resource disappear. With unwavering determination, she co-founded Warm Water Wellness and rallied the support from our community and gathered with so many other individuals and so many other groups who are equally responsible for the victory at the end. Through petitions, advocacy, and sheer willpower, she and her team led a movement that eventually brought about the million-dollar renovations necessary to reopen the pool, thanks to a partnership with Sutter Health. Her work didn't stop the dedication to making sure no one is left behind is truly inspiring. And I know that there are many people in this room who were equally a part of Lindsay's journey, and all of you are to be congratulated as well. Lindsay's efforts have not only been recognized here in San Mateo but also across the Bay Area, where she was honored with the prestigious Jefferson Community Service Award. This award highlights her extraordinary leadership, compassion, and commitment to the well-being of others. Lindsay, your vision and relentless advocacy have brought help, healing, and a sense of community back to so many who rely on the Mickelson Pool. You have given a voice to those who need it most and let that voice be loud and clear to all of us. And your work stands as a testament to the power of perseverance, service, and true heart. You're going to get me to cry, too. On behalf of the City of San Mateo, it is my great pleasure, on behalf of this council, to present this Quarterly Mayor's Award to you, Lindsay Reich, and to Warm Water Wellness. Thank you all for making our community a better place and for ensuring that generations to come will continue to benefit from your incredible efforts. And please, please come up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city attorney, staff, and community. Thank you so much, Mayor Diaz Nash, for those very extremely kind words. It is such a pleasure to be with all of you here tonight in this air-conditioned room, although I'm a fan of warm water. It's nice to be here with all of you. It is such an honor, and it's a deep honor to accept this award. And this recognition means the world to me, but more importantly, it is a reflection of the collective efforts of so many individuals who believed in the vital necessity of reopening the Mickelson Therapy Pool. Warm Water Wellness was born from the simple, yet powerful idea that everyone deserves access to therapeutic aquatic services. The healing power of water is undeniable, and we've seen firsthand how it transforms lives, whether it's someone regaining mobility, reducing pain, or simply feeling a renewed sense of hope and independence. The Herculean effort it took to reopen the only warm water therapy pool in San Mateo County cannot be overstated. It took a village of dedicated volunteers, elected officials, and thousands of community members contributing time, money, and effort to restore this precious resource. But none of this would have been possible without the incredible support of our local leaders. Great Father and the Water Weenies would be so proud of your unwavering support for our cause. Bobbing around in the water with you on reopening day with you and the other patrons is a memory that I will always cherish. It has been such a joy reuniting with old friends and seeing the smiles on people's faces this past month at the pool. Thank you once again to the mayor, the council, and the entire San Mateo community for this incredible honor.
I think Councilmember Hedges wanted to say something.
Just wanted to tell you that your efforts have affected our family directly. Really appreciate it. My wife used the pool for the first time last week. She's going through extended rehabilitation from a knee replacement. Didn't go as well as we'd hoped it had. So, thank you very much.
Can I find my...
Absolutely.
So, Lindsay, I wanted to just commend your tenacity and your passion. It's just such a shining example of what can be accomplished when there's one person who has such a big spark. And if anyone needs a master class in organizing, call this woman up.
Yes.
Because she would book my calendar regularly. And we'd go through the list of cities and city leaders that had yet to pass an ordinance or a resolution in support of reopening. And literally, she would sit on the meeting with me while I texted my friends and said, "Hey, Lindsay's going to call you." You know, pick up the phone. And that's how you get to 20 out of 20 cities supporting the same thing. And so, I really, you know, I really appreciate the, you know, the work and commitment that that took, all as a volunteer. And you had everything, everything was stacked against you. It was such a, it felt like such an unwinnable battle at the time. And you kept at it, and people came with you. And that says so much about your leadership. So, thank you.
So, now the Lindsay Fan Club can go out and celebrate. Yeah. Thank you all for coming. Anyone who wants to stay is welcome, of course. The Fan Club goes, yes. Okay, we have a very, very important presentation now as our second ceremonial item. National Fire Prevention Month, and Carissa Workman, our fire marshal, is coming up to share how we can be safe. So, thank you. You are always welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, city staff and community. Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October 9th in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire, which began on October 8th, 1871, killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres of land. The history of catastrophic fires like this has changed the way that we build cities due to the awareness and the importance of fire safety. Today, we build with fire protection in mind. For example, the width of streets, fire-resistant construction, fire protection systems, and maintaining adequate defensible space when building in wild and urban interface areas. The adoption and enforcement of many of the fire and building codes and standards keep our communities safe today. Fire Prevention Week is celebrated throughout North America every October and is the oldest U.S. Public Health Observance on record. For more than 100 years, Fire Prevention Week has worked to educate people, the risk of home fires, and ways to minimize them. Local fire departments, schools, and community organizations play a key role in bringing Fire Prevention Week to life in their communities each year and spreading basic but critical fire safety messages. This year's theme is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work for You. Smoke alarms can make a lifesaving difference in a home fire, but they have to be working. And this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign reinforces the critical importance of smoke alarms and what's needed to install, test, and maintain them properly. In FPA, reports that 38% of home fire deaths results from fires in which no smoke alarms were present. People tend to remove the smoke alarms or the batteries when trying to fix an issue, and it puts them at serious risk in the event of a fire. This year's Fire Prevention Week campaign gives people the tools and knowledge to keep their smoke alarms in working order. Key messages for this year's theme are install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway, and on each level, including basements. Make sure that the smoke alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button and replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or don't respond when tested. This past Saturday, we had our annual Fire Prevention Week open house in Foster City at Station 28. San Mateo Consolidated partnered with PD, Public Works, and other volunteers such as CERT and Emergency Management was also there, where we all participated in the event. We demonstrated how to put on personal protective equipment, coats, hats, hood, showing how fast that firefighters have to put this on to respond to emergencies. Additional demonstrations included how to effectively use a fire extinguisher and to extinguish the fire, and also, we had an auto extrication demonstration. We had fire prevention educational booths set up, which included interactive activities for children of all ages. There was, this was another successful event that brought in approximately 1,500 attendees and gave us an opportunity to interact with the communities in which we serve. Thank you for your time, and happy Fire Prevention Week 2024.
Thank you. And please, please stand there for one second because we have a proclamation to read for the Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of San Mateo is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those who live and visit San Mateo, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires, and whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported fires almost in half, and whereas San Mateo Consolidated Fire Departments First Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires, home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas San Mateo residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and one on every level of the home, and whereas San Mateo First Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme is, as you so eloquently told us, "Smoke alarms make them work for you," serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoking alarms in the home. So, now therefore, I, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby recognize October 6th, October 12th as Fire Prevention Week. Congratulations.
Thank you.
A little patience, thank you, everyone.
We should be, we should be good to continue now.
Okay. Martin, by the way, has been technology wizard the entire evening. You don't know what he's already gone through. So, thank you very much. We are in your, your great debt. That's right. Normally, applause is not allowed during meetings, but that one was worth it, yes. So, we have another very good presentation on Caltrain electrification. And I believe Brett Tian Tian, Tian Tian? You can help me pronounce your name correctly. The External Affairs Manager of Caltrain is here to share all the great things that you have done. Oh, and by the way, I know some of you are interested in making comment on train noise. We don't have public comment during the ceremony, but after the consent calendar, we will have general public comment, and that's when you should all make your comment. Okay? So, thank you very much. Okay, Brent, over to you.
Yeah, great. Next slide, please. Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash, Deputy Mayor Newsom, council members. My name's Brent Teigen, the External Affairs Manager for, it's a tough one, so. The External Affairs Manager for the Caltrain Electrification Project. Excited to give you an update tonight on the project, which is now officially complete, but still happy to provide an update on what has happened. So, just a reminder on the Caltrain context for us. We run trains from San Francisco down to Gilroy. Caltrain actually owns the tracks from San Francisco down to Tamian Station in San Jose, so that is a portion that has been electrified. We have 31 stations, still a bidirectional commute, meaning we see pretty equal north and southbound trips, 41 at-grade crossings, and we have seen obviously some financial challenges with our ridership being reduced since the pandemic. Pre-pandemic, we had 73% of our fare box recovery, which means how much money we actually get back from our funds, our service was from fares. But today, that's down to 23% because we have seen such a dip in our ridership. Next slide, please. With that, we are doing so much to ensure that our ridership grows in the future. We have seen slow and steady growth since 2022, since we introduced more service than ever. We adopted a board equity and growth and recovery policy, making sure we diversify our ridership, revised our schedule to standardize it. It's currently a clock-faced schedule, meaning that every half an hour, there's at least one train coming through with more during the peak. A lot of regional coordination with our partners, BART, MTA, VTA, SAM Trans. We have included in the Bay Plas program, which is an unlimited pilot program for those that sign up to use any transit within the area, in the Bay Area. And then, customer experience, just making sure that the customer experience here on Caltrain is the best that it can be. Really excited that the youth fare has been permanently adopted by our board, which is $1 youth fare, unlimited rides, actually $2 day pass, so $1 youth fare in one direction. But if you wanted to get a youth pass for the day, it's actually $2. So, that's a really great introduction for younger folks to get on board and to learn how to use the system. A lot more new bike lockers onboard on the system as well to make sure that folks can make that first and last mile connection. Next slide, please. So, we are in transformational moment. We are celebrating our 160th year of the railroad here on the corridor. You can see the picture of what actually was 1864, when the first steam engine was introduced on the San Francisco to San Jose line. In the 1950s, we were introducing, not Caltrain, but the state was introducing diesels on the railroad. And then, this year, we are really proud to introduce these new electric trains, which began service in August this year. Next slide, please. So, some key milestones, these are all complete, really happy to say. So, we installed over 3,000 foundations, 2,500 poles, over two and a half million feet of wire from San Francisco down to San Jose, upgraded the signal system, which controls all the crossings, trained a lot of our first responders, over 1,000 of them are EMTs, fire, police, to know how to interact with these new electric trains. We did a soft launch in August, so on August 10th and 11th, we introduced our trains for the first time, and then full electric service started on September 21st, 2024. Next slide, please. So, we had a great celebration on September 21st and 22nd. We really appreciate San Mateo hosting us at the station. City staff was amazing to work with to make sure that event went without a hitch. Thank you, Mayor Diaz Nash, for coming and helping us celebrate. I know I saw some of you else there as well. I know I saw some of you else there as well. Really good, diverse cultural celebration. We had over 7,000 people come to our both events. Next slide, please. So for the electrified service plan, this is actually what we'll see under the benefits for the new electric trains. So those trains can go from San Francisco to San Jose in under an hour. Quicker local service, so that trip that makes all local stops will be 77 minutes instead of the previous 100. And those traveling from southern Santa Clara County, whether it's Gilroy, Morgan Hill, et cetera, can save nearly 20 minutes to their trip to San Francisco. Even though we're having the same amount of trains a day as we did previously, which is 104 per day, those trains are able to stop and start more quickly and provide 20% more service to more stations and 26% more service to equity priority stations. That's either minority or low-income identified areas. And what I've heard most excitement about is that half hourly service, both on the weekends and off-peak. So anytime throughout the day, now there's at least half hourly service and more on the peak. So these trains are very comfortable, modern, spacious. There's free Wi-Fi, free fast Wi-Fi onboard, smoother required experience onboard, outlets at every seat, and digital trip information to make sure folks know where they're going. And then, not to mention, all the clean benefits. Really proud to work with both San Mateo or Peninsula Clean Energy here in San Mateo County, as well as San Jose Clean Energy, I forget the exact name, but San Jose Power down in Santa Clara County to provide 100% carbon-free electricity to this. We actually had to create a special product with both of those agencies to make sure it was 100% carbon-free for that. So, yeah, next slide, please. So we have some great city fact sheets. There's one particularly about San Mateo. You can go to caltrain.com/servicebenefits. It shows how much quicker the trips will be for each station in San Mateo, as well as how much service will be at each station. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick summary of the additional stops at the stations. So previously, San Mateo Station received 78 stops. So they're getting another, what's that, 22 stops? I can't do math on the spot. But another, yeah, 26 spots, 26 trains per day. So more service. San Mateo will get, what means every train will stop now at San Mateo, making those connections along the corridor better for that station. Hayward Park received an increase of 46 to 75. And then Hillsdale, again, getting all the trains every day, including express, local, limited. So more folks in those areas can make more connections on those trains. Next slide, please. We're doing a lot of public outreach around our safety campaign. If you have any schools or events that you want us to come out and table at, we're more than happy to do that. We've done over 50 tablings over the last year at either, yeah, schools. There's International Walk to School Day, or Walk or Roll to School Day. We're happy to come and celebrate and coordinate with that as well. So we're doing a lot of outreach around safety. You can go to caltrain.com/safety to learn more about that. Next slide, please. And then for just continuing to connect with us, you can go to caltrain.com/electrification. There's no more construction that's going to be done for this project in particular. The trains are going to be continuing to roll out into service. We have 15 trains on site now. We're getting 23 eventually, so we'll continue to get more trains next year. And then, yeah, next slide, please. I have a few more slides on an initiative that we're working on with all the cities along the corridor. Next slide, please. Which is a Caltrain City Partnership Toolkit. So we really know that the cities are key for helping us bring back our ridership. And you guys know best of what your cities are doing in terms of transportation. So we have a couple of different toolkits or tool items that we've worked with cities to learn kind of best practices. Next slide, please. And so the goal of this toolkit is really to help reduce traffic, parking demand, both for your cities and to increase ridership for Caltrain, support downtown recovery, which has been so great along B Street, improve employee recruitment and retention for your city employees, incentivize workers to return to the office, and obviously, continue to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from encouraging public transit. Next slide, please. And then, see, these are some of the partnership models that we've offered to cities and just a toolkit to really share best practices from what we hear other cities are doing. So city worker Go passes. Some cities have signed up for what is called a Go Pass. That's unlimited Caltrain rides. It's per employee that is employed by the city, but allows any city worker to ride Caltrain unlimited, both on the weekdays and weekends. Transportation demand management, development agreements, local ordinances, all to help support public transit. And again, we're working with staff here to share that as part of our CSGG, which is our city staff coordinating group. And really, again, it's just best practices we're hearing from other cities and just making sure that knowledge is shared across all the great things that everybody's doing. Next slide, please. And then, I'm happy to answer questions, but I did want to thank Deputy Mayor Newsom for coming to our board meeting last week to just share the comments that you've heard about our horn noise. I think you heard from our chief operating officer, as well as our executive director, that we are working to reduce the train horn noise. There is a federal limit, there's a federal range, I would should say. And so we are working to make sure that the horns are at the minimum range. Our operating officer mentioned that about 50% of the trains have been reduced down to that minimum level, but they're working to get the rest done by mid-October. And so those train horns do have to be sounded at either crossings or when there's work happening along the corridor. And yeah, I'm happy to work with staff or council to answer more questions, but I know there might be some comments as well.
First, thank you very much for the presentation. And we were very happy to welcome you in San Mateo.
So, thank you for coming. Thank you for the presentation. I apologize that I, when I came to see you guys last week, I was limited to one minute. So I had to get right into it. And so before I get right into it again, I'd like to say that, you know, we're all, I think I speak on behalf of the whole council, we're all thrilled about the new trains. We're all looking forward to them being quieter. You know, there are concerns that have been raised, particularly since we've gone fully electric, that we're hearing a lot more horn noise, specifically in the southern part of our city. Because in the southern part of our city, we have grade separation. So, previous to having fully electrified trains, we weren't having any horns blowing, really, until just prior to 9th Avenue, which is, as you come into downtown and then you have at-grade crossings. So we have, and if you can stick around after, I'm sure during public comment, you're going to hear from some people because the question is, is why are we having more horn noise where we didn't used to have any horn noise at all? So it's that, you know, we can explain away some of it that the frequency is higher during peak. But for example, there's a woman who will be speaking, who has been timing it on rush hour traffic and gets 59 blasts in 60 minutes. And so that's, that just seems like it's out of whack. And that's why, I'm going to ask you a few questions. If you don't have the answers, it's fine. I just want to, you know, give you the direction of finding out for us. The questions are, does federal law require horn blowing at approach of any station? Or is it specifically bells when it's approaching stations?
It depends on the configuration of the station in particular. So some stations, depending on if there, if there's a grade crossing, for sure. At any grade crossing, there has to be a horn that is sounded. For grade-separated station, I don't know the specifics, but depending on, you know, if it's a center, there's some that are like Hillsdale where it's a center-bound or center boarding platform. That can vary. So I can definitely get the information for you. And yeah, I'm not doubting the report of 59 in an hour, but that does not sound normal.
Right, yeah, I mean, I've gone and sat for 45 minutes and I can attest to the fact that it's not exaggerated. It's definitely more present. And in fact, myself and Councilmember Lee are both in close enough proximity that we also hear it at our own homes. So it's definitely on the uptick. I think I have one more question. I think we've covered. So I know that it's required at all grade crossings, but specifically, the questions are, why are we seeing, you know, noise-related increases prior to the Hayward Park station when everything south should be above grade separation? So we're wondering if there are any construction projects? I was supposed to hear back, and I haven't. If there's any construction projects besides on the rail that might be affecting that? There also was, unfortunately, a fatality on the rail, and we're wondering if there's a practice of having to use more horns for a specific period of time after an incident?
There's not a practice, but the engineers may be a little more sensitive if the incident has happened. The only construction project I know of in San Mateo on the rails currently is the San Mateo Parking Track, which I believe is between 10th and 14th Avenue on the rail on the, I believe, west side. So I can't say, I don't know if there's a grade crossing south of that, off the top of my head, that might be. Yeah, they might be approaching that work area then before sounding a horn in that area. Especially if coming south, they might be approaching. So that might be what is being, I'm not sure exactly where the 59 in an hour was recorded, but.
It's during rush hour. So when we have the three trains going either direction per.
Was it around that location between 10th and 14th? Okay, that might be the cause.
Just south of that, but.
Yeah, that might be the cause where there's construction. And during construction, they do have to sound horns, again federally regulated, because there are crews on the tracks during that time.
Can you get back to us with an update as to what the duration of that project is, as to when it'll be completed?
Yes, I believe early next year, January next year is when it's expected to be completed.
Do we know, are they working on it all the time? Or is there quiet hours that we should be able to expect?
I'd have to get back to you on that one, yeah. And then, I did note that our chief operating officer was going to also, there's now on these trains, they can see how often the horns are sounded. So he's going to look into that to make sure the locations were appropriate for what they need to be done, not more excessive. So we're working on it. I'm happy to hear comments from residents, but yeah, appreciate it.
And again, we're thrilled to have these faster trains. We're thrilled to have more frequency. We're just looking to get a little bit of relief, and it sounds like it's on its way.
Understood, yes.
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Well, I'm happy to report I'm a regular rider. And I also have two kids, two teens. And I was wondering if you have any updates about the youth Clipper Card process that you could share? It was a little bit of an experience to get my youth Clipper Cards for my kids. And I hear that there is a new system forthcoming. And I'm so glad that you're doing outreach to schools. I mean, what I would love to see, and we'll just plant the seed, is actually having transit learning days in collaboration with schools and school districts. The city of San Mateo has three train stations and plenty of schools to pick and choose from. And it would be so wonderful to see a pilot like that start here. But it really, you know, to get ridership, you can start early with building young riders and lifetime riders through the schools. And so if you have any updates about the youth Clipper Cards, I would be thrilled to hear what the plans are.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't. That's managed by MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. I know there is a Clipper 2.0, which will help, you know, simplify things for both adults using a credit card, just being able to tap on like you do in other transit agencies. But I don't know anything about the youth Clipper Card. I know you do have to, like, have proof that you send in. That might have been your experience. So for us, yeah, the $1 and $2 youth fare and day pass are really what you mentioned about hoping younger folks can learn how easy transit is, how safe it is for riders, and can start young, like you said. But I don't have any update on the Clipper youth, unfortunately.
That would unlock a lot of riders. I'll tell you right now, the process was involved about four hours on the phone and multiple weeks, including submitting a hard copy application. And then another couple of hours on the phone to add money. So I think.
Sorry to hear that.
I think we can fix that.
Well, she's identified a great opportunity for you.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Okay, great. All right, well then, Brent, thank you very much. And please stick around just for general public comment because I know a number of our audience participants would have something to say.
Yep, thank you. And you know how to reach us too if you have any more questions or comments. We're happy to work with you and, yeah, and really excited about it.
And we were very excited to see it all. Thank you very much. Okay, before we move on, I wanted to make a statement on behalf of the council. On the one-year anniversary of the October 7th attack in southern Israel, I, as Mayor of San Mateo and my council members, strongly condemn all acts of political violence. The horrific events of that day, which claimed the lives of over 1,200 innocent people, including many Americans, are a tragic reminder of the devastation that violence brings. In our city, we uphold the values of democracy, where differences are resolved through dialogue, not brutality. Political violence, regardless of its motivation, only deepens division and fuels further hatred. As we remember the victims of October 7th, I urge our community to stand united against all forms of violence and hatred, reaffirming our commitment to peace, respect, and understanding at home and abroad. Let us honor the memory of those lost by working toward a world where such tragedies never occur again. Thank you. Now let's move on to our consent calendar. City Clerk, please read the calendar.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If further discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council 2025 Regular Meeting Calendar Adoption. Item number five, Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees Appointment Subcommittee Appointment Recommendation. Item number six, King Recreation Center New Fire Alarm System Construction Contract. Item number seven, Administration of Sewer Service Charge Agreement. Item number eight, California Municipal Finance Authority Conduit Financing. Item number nine, Police Department and Public Works Department Classification Updates. Item number 10, Central Park Phase 1 Playground Improvement Project Bid Rejection. And finally, item number 11, SEIU Maintenance Unit Memorandum of Understanding Changes.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the council Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the calendar? Councilmember Hedges.
I don't really want to pull one, but I'd like the city manager to just talk a little bit about item number eight because I think it's significant and I think we're going to get some infrastructure done without taking it out of our purse.
And maybe, why don't we take a vote on the calendar and then the city manager can make his comments? Okay, great.
Move approval then.
Okay. Yeah, first, before we get there, I, yes, yes, yes. If any member of the public wishes to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time. This is for consent calendar items only. Do we have any requests?
Madam Mayor, I have not received any request to speak on the consent calendar in chambers. If you wish to speak on this item and you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand now. Madam Mayor, there's no request to speak on the consent calendar.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion from the council to approve? Thank you. City clerk?
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And before we respond to your, your question, I would like to invite up Tolu Fili Fa to come on up and be sworn in.
All right.
I, Tolu Fili Fa.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly, uh, do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend.
Then I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
In the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I, that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the state of California.
And to the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or proper submersion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. Yes. Ms. Fa is going to make sure we are all safe from West Nile virus and other diseases. So we really appreciate it. Okay, now, city manager, in response to Councilmember Hedges.
So the item that Councilmember Hedges pulled for further discussions is the California Municipal Finance Authority Conduit Financing. And I'll have our finance director, Karen Wang, come up and speak a little bit further. We also have a representative from CM, I believe CMFA or from Health Ride 360 on the call who can talk further about the bond issuance. There is no city funds. The city is not responsible in any way as part of this. It's a $65 million bond issuance, which 2.9 million are for infrastructure projects located here in the city of San Mateo. In order for us to be able to utilize those funds, this is part of the requirements to have this item come before the, well, we are given authority, this, this agreement itself allows staff to sign off on this rather than having to have these come to council in the future. But I'll have our finance director, she could probably speak more eloquently, along with the representative who's online this evening.
Good evening, council. This is Karen Hong, Finance Director with the city of San Mateo. Regarding this item number eight on the consent calendar, it is relating to California Municipal Financing Authority. We are a member for this authority because we join a JPA, Joy Power Agreement back in 2019. And this entity, they are here to help local government, nonprofit organization and business who they cannot issue bonds on their own. And they have the specialty to help local government, nonprofit and business to issue financing. Back in 2019, that's where we become a member, they, they issue bonds like city manager mentioned, issue a bonds of 65 million and 2.9 million is benefiting our community. But that one is a tax exempt bonds and we have to come to the council and we have to do a public hearing because of the regulation. And the item in front of you tonight is for taxable bond, which doesn't require public hearing. And it's just because they, they have a project in our jurisdiction, that's why they have to ask us to approve it. And our city have no obligation, legal or moral obligation whatsoever. We don't need to pay any debt service and the whole liability is, is, is not, not us, it belongs to the borrower. So our, our item is to ask council to give the city manager the authority to approve such financing when it's taxable bond and it's benefiting our community and it have no legal obligation to the city of San Mateo. Only under those criteria, the city manager will be able to streamline the process and help those entity to issue bonds to fund their projects. So that's what this item is about.
Thank you. All right, I think that is, that's good comment. So let's move on to general public comment. Did you want to say something?
Do we need a vote on this item? We're good? Okay.
Yeah, I think we did, yeah.
I just asked for a comment on that.
Yep. So next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. City clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. So for requests to speak in council chambers, right now I have a total of four requests to speak. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand now if you'd like to speak. We will be calling the last speaker. After that time, we will not be taking any additional speakers. So I'll give you just a few moments to do so. Madam Mayor, there's no further request to speak. So we have a total of four requests to speak. So per council adopted rules and procedures, we'll have three minutes per speaker. So to facilitate public comment and our last, just to announce, our last speaker will be Anne De La Rosa. But if I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that'll help us make sure we get through all of the comments, the requests to speak we have received. So the first three speakers will be Maria Mavridis, followed by Deborah Rosenfield, followed by Michael Egan.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for hearing me. I appreciate Deputy Mayor Rob Newsom bringing up the issue of the excessive train noise. Ever since the Caltrain's new law went into effect in 2020, requiring train conductors to signal well in advance of any railroad crossing, our neighborhood in Sunnybury, including our home on 10th and South Grant, has been bombarded with incessant noise and the most obnoxious racket from every train going by any time of the day or night. It has been affecting our sleep and quiet enjoyment of our home and neighborhood at all hours. The excessive train horns are coming mostly from commuter trains, which travel less than every hour in both directions and from freight trains as well. Effectually, since 2020, we have been subject to hearing train blares all the way from the crossings in downtown on Second to the crossing on Fifth, to the crossing on Ninth, and even beyond, though there are no more at-grade crossings after Ninth. This comes to 20 train blares per train within our earshot, sounding one after another in continuous flares. As a visual directly from Caltrain's schedule, here is northbound train stopping at San Mateo Station times in a period of one hour. 5:12 PM, 5:25, 5:42, 5:55. And southbound, 5:12, 5:23, 5:42, 5:53. This amounts to 160 train signals per hour, and it is like this around the clock, starting at 5:30 AM through 12:30 midnight. Additionally, there are freight trains that blast us from sleep at 1 AM, 2, 3, 5, and then Caltrain starts up again at 5:30 AM. This is an excessive amount of noise pollution from one of the highest decibel sound generators cities have. It goes through our double pane windows and no amount of white noise or earplugs block this. We have been told by a public works employee that the decibel levers, levels have not increased per Caltrain. However, we, the community, are telling you that the train sounding noise pollution has significantly increased since August 2024. More so, from speaking to one Caltrain employee the week of September 23rd this year in regards to the racket to neighborhoods, quote, "It is so embarrassing because these are supposed to be new trains and we keep on having problems with the horn. Last week, we had a horn malfunction and it was sounding all the way from San Jose to San Francisco nonstop, and this happened more than once." I would really request for San Mateo to revert back to how it was before 2020 when train signals were used sparingly and not in this over-the-top way. Implement quiet zones without delay. Why should we be waiting until 2026? We appreciate your continuous advocacy on this issue for the residents. Also, as a nurse, there's such a thing as alarm fatigue. It is a condition that occurs when people become desensitized to safety alerts, which can lead to missed or delayed responses.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Deborah Rosenfield, followed by Michael Egan and Anna De La Rosa.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Deborah Rosenfeld. I live on South Delaware Street, near the corner of Pacific Avenue, with the Hayward Park Station a half mile north. For 24 years, I did not hear any train horns while inside my condo, including when my windows were open, which they are most of the time. I enjoyed relative silence in my home, which allowed me to meditate after work, sleep undisturbed, read and relax. Since late August this year, or since August this year, I have been bombarded by up to 60 train horns per hour. I counted the train horns from 5:50 to 6:50 PM on September 30th, 60 horns that I could hear from my living room during that one hour. Based on the new Caltrain schedule, I'm hearing approximately 750 horns every day, when just two months ago I heard zero. I can hear the horns with the windows closed, with the TV on, and while wearing earplugs. I've been woken up by Caltrain horns at 5:30 AM and at 12:30 AM almost every single day. Since 2000, no horns were sounded behind the public storage at 2222 South Delaware Street on the corner of Pacific and South Delaware, which is very close to where I live. Now, the horns start blasting on northbound trains before passing the public storage building. This is right behind my building and a large apartment complex called Mode. Why are horns now being sounded behind my building when they were not for the last 24 years? I have filed four oral and written consumer complaints with Caltrain, but have received no answers or responses. While Caltrain celebrates their new quieter trains, they need to stop railroading San Mateo residents like me and reduce the horn noise back to zero in my neighborhood like it was for the last 24 years. Thank you very, very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael, and our final speaker will be Anne De La Rosa.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am frequently in the area of 10th and Delaware in San Mateo, and the train horns seem to start around Third Avenue and don't stop until they get to about 10th. I'm not sure why that is. It's almost constant. Recently, I was there and, and they went through blowing, 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 blowing. And just shortly after that, Union Pacific went by and went toot, and that was about it. So what is the reason that the new electric trains need to blow their horns so often? I don't know. Also, the horn is a higher frequency and it's not a very pleasant sound. It's a, it needs to be lowered to a lower frequency so it doesn't spread out into the neighborhood so much. On the same subject, while riding my bicycle on Pacific Boulevard near the City Corporation Yard, a northbound Caltrain came along, and I'm not sure why, but the electric train seemed to whistle happy. I counted four separate whistles before entering the Hayward Station. Some were probably a quarter of a mile away before the Hayward Park Station. And on the same, same subject as train noise, I came home, I also, I live at Meadow Court, at the city limit on Pacific Boulevard. When I came home Friday night, September 27th, there was a work crew working on the railroad tracks at the Belmont-San Mateo City Line. I don't know what they did, but on Saturday morning, the northbound train wheels were making a loud clacking sound. I don't know the reason for this modification, but it should be moved to the north side of 42nd Avenue where there are no housing units. And on a quick side note, mostly for the city manager, the, I did, did send an email, but this is kind of pertinent. They repaved Pacific Boulevard for some reason in second time in two years. The first time they did it, I asked them to return our parking between the city limit and Lori Meadow. And the only answer I got, we, we have lots of things to think about, we were on the queue, that's two years ago, they've never responded to me. Now I'm asking you again because I see they have this street marked with the temporary marks where they're going to put the lanes again, and it's the same as it was. All of a sudden, after miles of normal road, they have a bicycle freeway for 500 feet, and then it goes back to Belmont and it's just normal again. In the meantime, we have horrendous parking problems. So I've sent this email to these people, but anyhow, it needs to be addressed immediately before they paint.
Thank you.
The street, which is probably going to happen in the next two or three days.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, our final speaker will be Anne De La Rosa.
Hi, I'm calling in, I'm talking in regards to the set-out track, which should be called the Hayward Park Set-Out Track. It has been built for the last six months directly by my, behind my house in 2019. There was in this chambers, many extensive community outreach discussions about whether the set-out track should be placed near a residential neighborhood or not. We were told there weren't any environmental impact effects that would happen to this. Well, I have to say, I am a huge environmental impact affected by this. The new train, the minute the set-out track was, was connected to the southbound train track, my house, my neighbors on either side of me have had continued vibration through our house every time at speed, a high-speed train goes by. It's not a freight train, it's not a slow train, it's something to do with the speed of the train going through, and our houses feel as if there's an earthquake. I've lived here for 40 years. I can, I've tolerated, I love trains, I ride trains all the time. This is a whole different feeling. It's affected our homes, it's affecting our foundations, it's affecting our structures. And what I'm, besides myself, concerned about is these vibrational issues with high-speed trains. If you guys are all fighting to have high density along the rail corridor, and if new apartment building is going to be built all along this, and these newly constructed places are going to have the type of vibrational issues that you can't feel it on the track, you can't feel it on the sidewalk outside, but the vibration comes through, probably because the soil was improperly compacted. I watched them dig that soil up, put soil back down, oh, they didn't put a pipe in properly, dig it back up, put the soil down. I don't think the land was prepared properly out underneath the set-out track, and the vibration, the northbound train causes no issues with our homes. Southbound train connected to the new set-out track, this gentleman can, said that the construction of the electrification is complete, they haven't finished the electrification of the set-out track. The set-out track project has been going on since April, who knows when it will be finished. We've had, I have recordings of 112 decibels around my house, what, during all the construction, we've had compact, vibrating compactors. I have huge levels of vibration to my home. So, but I'm concerned about you guys, when you're looking forward and when you're thinking about Measure T, yes, vote yes for Measure T, have lots of people living near the railroad, and if their lives are going to be impacted by it, mine and my neighbors, where our sleep is impacted and everything, you really seriously need to consider this. Caltrain has not responded well to any of our emails and stuff. The only person is their communication director. We want to talk to an engineer to help mitigate these vibrational issues, and not one of them has reached out. They, they say they're going to contact us and then put it off. And they, then they give me a pacifying, yes, we'll try, we'll get together, but we don't hear any actual things that are happening. Thank you. So worry about vibration when all these high-speed trains come through.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you.
We have concluded public comment.
The Clipper Card will not be fundable for the $1, $2 fare, so you can just put $2 in your kid's pocket. If you want a, on your Clipper Card, you want a wall break.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I want to say thank you very much to everyone who made public comment. These are very serious issues and we are taking them seriously. And city manager, I would like you to comment, please.
Yeah, happy to comment. So we have been aware and we've heard from the community, as, as well as the council has heard from the community, who have reached out to me as well. And so I've directly reached out to the executive director, Shelby Chart of Caltrain, to notify her of the issues at hand. I know Councilmember Newsom physically went personally down there and spent about two hours at the meeting to be able to make his one minute of public comment. And then at the same time, we have reached out also just about the passing track as well and the issue, issues that are happening there. And I've requested a meeting with the executive director, along with the project managers for the project itself, and happy to bring up the other items that the community has raised this evening as well at that meeting. I'm hoping to, we were actually working on scheduling it today. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that meeting with Caltrain staff to raise these issues and request additional information.
Thank you. And can I request that once you have that meeting, that there's a report made back that we can share with the public?
Yeah, no problem at a upcoming council meeting, happy to do that.
Thank you very much. And once again, thank you, everyone, and stay engaged, it's important. And thank you, Brent, for staying and hearing the comments. It's important that you do as well, because we all want the electrification to happen, but we also want our community to be safe and healthy and their homes to be safe. So thank you for that. So I think we are finished with public comment, general public comment, so I'm going to close general public comment and move on to alt-business. Item number 12, new construction reach codes for the 2022 code cycle. Andrea Chow, down she comes. Our sustainability analyst will make a presentation. Thank you very much, Ms. Chow. I think that the temperature is set for how many people are in the room. We think everybody here will stay awake, so. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayors Nash, members of the city council and members of the public. My name is Andrea Chow. I'm the sustainability analyst with the city of San Mateo and I'm accompanied by Taylor from TRC. And tonight, we have a presentation for you on new construction reach codes for the 2022 code cycle. So staff's recommendation to council is to provide feedback and direction on potential new reach codes for the 2022 code cycle. More specifically, staff will ask council to consider these two questions. Should staff bring the Energy Performance Reach Code ordinance to a future city council meeting to replace the city's currently suspended new construction all-electric reach codes for the 2022 code cycle? Or should staff defer reach code exploration and adoption until next year for the 2025 code cycle? So this item tonight focuses on the city's all-electric reach code for new construction for which enforcement is currently suspended. Tonight, my presentation will provide background on the city's reach code and the federal court case. It will present a replacement reach code option and also include discussion of the advantages and disadvantages of implementing a reach code for the remainder of this code cycle. And I'm going to start with a little bit of reach codes background. So every three years, the California Building Standards Commission updates the building code. We're currently midway through the 2022 code cycle and that will end in December of next year. At any time jurisdictions are able to adopt local building code amendments and in this case, we're talking about reach codes that require more sustainable building design and construction. So the adoption of reach codes is an important strategy for meeting the city's climate action plan goals and reducing greenhouse gas emissions from buildings. Reach codes allow cities to be local leaders in climate solutions and the city of San Mateo has a strong history of adopting reach codes to meet climate goals. In 2020, the city's first all-electric reach code for new buildings went into place. And when I say all-electric buildings, I mean buildings that have electric appliances for space and water heating, clothes drying and cooking. By avoiding the use of natural gas, an all-electric building has a smaller carbon footprint as we have electricity from cleaner and cleaner sources. In October 2022, the city council introduced an ordinance approving several local amendments, including requiring new construction to be all-electric for the 2022 code cycle. And so this went into effect at the beginning of that code cycle, which was January 1, 2023. And over the past five years, we've seen more than 70 cities adopt local regulations requiring new construction to be all-electric. And the city of Berkeley was notably one of those first cities to adopt such a requirement. In April 2023, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and California Restaurant Association versus the city of Berkeley determined that a local ordinance that generally prohibited the installation of natural gas infrastructure was preempted by federal law. Berkeley sought rehearing but was denied the request in January 2024. And so due to this federal court decision, the city's current reach code requiring all-electric construction of new buildings cannot be enforced and is currently suspended. And because that reach code is, cannot be enforced, the city is instead enforcing the 2022 energy code, the state code. Putting this into the bigger context of the region and the state, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District adopted rules that will require zero NOx water heaters by 2027 and zero NOx HVAC in 2029. And so this means gas water heaters and gas furnaces will no longer be sold or installed in the Bay Area beginning in those different timeframes. The state also has similar standards beginning in 2030, but the Bay Area's timeline is ahead of that. And then looking towards 2045, California has a goal of achieving carbon neutrality with building electrification being essential to this goal. So since the city is no longer able to enforce its all-electric reach code, the council has the opportunity to consider another approach. Their approach most likely to conform with the Ninth Circuit's ruling is the Energy Performance Reach Code. This approach has been adopted by a handful of cities, including this code cycle, including Palo Alto, Brisbane, San Jose, East Palo Alto and the city of San Luis Obispo. This reach code is less restrictive than the city's previous all-electric requirement. It provides builders with options while resulting in buildings with lower emissions. So it is still consistent with the city's climate action plan. And now I'm going to turn it over to Taylor to talk in detail about the Energy Performance Reach Code.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me here today to talk about this important topic. My name is Taylor Taylor. I am an engineer and I work with TRC. TRC is an environmental consulting firm and specifically I work with reach codes. So I help local jurisdictions adopt building reach codes, electric vehicle infrastructure reach codes and take that from adoption through to implementation. We'll be talking today about the Energy Performance Reach Code for new construction and just reviewing what exactly is it, how does it work and how would compliance be achieved by those required to comply with this reach code? So first, we'll address the what is it question. It is essentially a stricter regulation of source energy. And source energy is a proxy for carbon emissions. Source energy is already regulated in the 2022 energy code today and that is done through the performance pathway. So this is already a part of the existing 2022 energy code. The goal of this reach code is to reduce new building emissions and prepare those buildings for future electrification. So how does it work? This kind of reach code would take effect through an amendment to the energy code, which is Title 24, Part 6. And then building applicants who are using the performance pathway, which is a majority of those complying with the energy code, and they would need to meet a stricter source energy target than what is required today. So today, the requirement for source energy is a value of zero or greater. And on the next slide, we'll talk about how that would be enhanced in this kind of reach code for the different building types. So the proposed standards, and this is specific to Climate Zone 3, which is the city of San Mateo's climate zone, for single-family buildings, the requirement would be to meet a compliance margin of nine. There are a couple exceptions for that, however, for smaller homes. So in this definition, a smaller home would be a home 1,500 square feet or less as compared to a typical construction, new construction home in California, which is 2,400 square feet. The reason for that is smaller homes have smaller footprints typically and it might be technically challenging for them to achieve the full compliance margin of nine. So there's been modeling done to prove that a compliance margin of four is more appropriate for homes in those situations. So that's the proposed standard for the single-family residential buildings. There are also targets for low-rise multifamily residential buildings. This is 10%. It's a slightly different metric, but these all mean essentially the same thing for both EDR-1 and source energy. It's just a slightly different like index that they're using. For the high-rise multifamily residential buildings, that standard is 4% and for non-residential, it is 7%. And we'll get into more detail about how compliance can be achieved for those later. First, I want to review again, what is source energy? So source energy is a rating system within the performance pathway of the energy code that is used to regulate energy performance. It's based on an hourly source energy metric, which establishes a carbon-based performance metric. And for multifamily buildings and non-residential buildings, that metric is called source energy as we saw on the previous slide. For single-family homes, there are three different source energy metrics. One of those is called EDR-1. So that's the metric within single-family homes that gets regulated. So what that looks like in terms of actually achieving compliance, this is the form that people going through the performance pathway for a single-family home would be complying with today. So what you're seeing on the left-hand side is there is a standard design rating and a proposed design rating. Those get filled out for these three different energy design ratings. The EDR-1 metric, which is the one we're most interested in, is the furthest left box there. So there's an energy design rating and then the proposed design is subtracted from the standard design to get the compliance margin, which is on the right-hand side of this slide. So I've highlighted the box that we're focusing on for the single-family home in San Mateo. The new requirement would be a value of nine. So in this example, this would now comply with the reach code based on the current present-day energy code. That value would have to be zero or greater in order to achieve a passing rating. And one more note on that compliance piece. So this is something that those who are already going through their performance pathway are looking at, their forms that they're already filling out. It's just that one metric that's changing and they have to figure out how to get to that number. So these are the two different ways that they can get to that value of nine for, again, the single-family example. And these are both compared to the base case without a reach code, which is mixed fuel. So that's on the left-hand side. That's based on the prescriptive pathway of the energy code today, which includes electric space heating and gas water heating. With those two appliance types, that gets you an EDR score of zero. The two options for a reach code are then laid out in the green boxes. So your first option is to go all-electric. So by converting that gas water heater into an electric water heater, that single move will get you to an EDR-1 margin of nine and you will comply with the reach code. Alternatively, you could, under this pathway, opt to keep mixed-fuel appliance types. So you could potentially have a gas space heater, a gas water heater. But in order to comply with this reach code, you would then have to increase your efficiency measures. So that could look like your insulation values, your window values, various things without the home. It would also require an increased use of solar and battery storage to be added to that home. And that would get you to the EDR-1 number of actually 13 in this case, if you were complying with that pathway. So we're going to take those two options that we just talked about on the previous slide and we're going to look at them from a cost lens. So there's the all-electric standard and from a new construction cost perspective as compared to that mixed-fuel baseline, this would get you a savings of $4,500 in upfront construction cost. So you would actually see a savings there. For the mixed-fuel situation, that includes efficiency measures, PV and a battery, that would cost you $8,700 in upfront construction costs. Those are just the upfront numbers, though. For cost effectiveness, the state of California takes into effect on-bill costs and long-term costs over time as well. So taking all of that into consideration, both of these measures are cost-effective and the CEC would approve that as part of the process for adopting this reach code. It should also be noted that while both of these pathways would save emissions, reduce emissions, the all-electric option would reduce them more and that is because San Mateo is a member agency of Peninsula Clean Energy and they supply a very clean energy source to San Mateo, which increases the emission savings of electrifications in buildings Okay, and now I want to make a very important note about which appliances are relevant for this reach code. We are really talking about space heating and cooling and water heating in these examples. And the reason for that is because we are talking about amending the performance pathway of the energy code, which is specific to permanent bolted-on appliances. So what's not going to be included in the regulation of this reach code is stoves, laundry, pools or fireplaces or pits. Okay, we talked about the compliance margins for this kind of reach code. There's another component to it, which is expanding electrical readiness requirements. So in addition to the state code, which contains several electric readiness measures today, the following electric readiness requirements are added to this reach code and mostly these are done through what the 2025 energy code has in store for electric readiness. So on the multifamily residential side, this would include electric readiness requirements for centralized water heating systems as well as expansion upon the existing individual dwelling unit water heating system electric readiness requirements. There would also be an electrical system sizing addition to this. This is just to ensure that in the future, multifamily buildings have the electrical infrastructure to support electrification of the whole building through conduit, et cetera. On the non-residential side, this looks at HVAC hot water temperature design. So this is an electric readiness measure to make sure that design of the future equipment could be electric. There's also a commercial kitchens electric readiness measure and then one that's more general, which is all other systems using gas or propane, which would loosely require some conduit to be located near the gas appliance or propane appliance that's being installed. And just to give you some more detail, there are different kinds of electric readiness requirements. So I've showed those on the right-hand side of this slide. That can be dedicated wiring that's installed within, for example, three feet of the gas-fired appliance. It can also be reserving electric breaker space provided for the future installation of those systems or appliances. For, for example, a heat pump water heater, this could also include space in the building to install a heat pump water heater in the future or plumbing for a condensate drain for hot and cold water. So I mentioned on the previous slide that a lot of those electric readiness requirements that we've included in the reach code today are related to the 2025 energy code. So I want to give you all some details about what that 2025 energy code is going to look like in relation to where we're at today, which is the 2022 energy code. Just for your reference, the 2025 energy code was just recently adopted by the CEC about a month ago, so the language is now finalized and we can talk more definitively about what it is going to look like. So the 2025 energy code does make progress on electrification and electric readiness measures. This table is going to highlight those changes specific to Climate Zone 3. So the green cells are going to highlight where electrification is prescriptively required. So for an example, we can look at space heating for both single-family and multifamily buildings. This has a heat pump being required for both the current code cycle we're in and that will be retained in the 2025 code cycle. Alternatively, I've highlighted some of these cells in yellow. Those yellow cells indicate where there is still opportunity for electrification, meaning that gas pathways are allowed. So single-family opportunities are mostly captured by the 2025 energy code. If you look at that top row, and you will see the most recent change for the water heating moving from gas propane or heat pump water heater to requiring the heat pump water heater there. In multifamily buildings, there's also some progress in 2025 on the water heating side by requiring the heat pump water heaters for individual systems, but it still does leave the option open for gas or propane equipment for centralized systems in those multifamily buildings. And then lastly, on the non-residential building side, there's still opportunities And then lastly, on the non-residential building side, there's still opportunities for both space heating and water heating, based on what we're seeing in the 2025 code. So although there were some additions, like the added requirement for multi-zone units in offices and schools, requiring those to be heat pumps, we believe that there's other opportunities that will exist in 2025. So while the 2025 REACH code, or the 2025 Energy Code does make progress, the REACH code we are discussing today is really about bridging the gap between where we are right now until 2025. So we are talking about roughly the next 15 months before the 2025 requirements go into effect, which would be January 1, 2026. So the present REACH code we're talking about would encourage many of these things that are coming in 2025. A new REACH code would need to go through the same process for the 2025 Energy Code if you wanted to continue forward in the year 2026 with this. So it's really, this REACH code today is only relevant from now until the end of next year. And then if you wanted to continue that style of REACH code, there'd be new studies done, new cost-effectiveness done, and that would come back to council for your review at that point as well.
So the city of San Mateo is known for being a leader in sustainability and for implementing strong REACH codes. And with the city's all-electric new construction REACH code currently suspended, this presented an opportunity for the city council to evaluate a replacement. The city has had experience adopting local amendments in the middle of a code cycle. However, it is important to acknowledge that the new REACH code will require a significant amount of administrative work for a short-lived implementation time, only lasting through the end of this current code cycle until December 31, 2025. In terms of impact, new construction accounts for a small number of projects in San Mateo, but new construction has always been a priority to our city council because it is the most cost-effective time to encourage sustainable design. Absent the city's all-electric requirement, it is difficult to estimate how many buildings would be constructed with natural gas. It's also important to note that at the end of every code cycle, there tends to be an uptick in building permits because applicants are looking to lock in the current building code they're in. So we might anticipate an uptick of building permit applications in the year 2025. In terms of feedback, according to staff for larger multifamily and non-residential development projects that have approved planning applications but do not yet have their building permit, these projects are planning to be built all-electric regardless of the REACH code requirement. And I think it's important to acknowledge that these projects require multiple years for design, so they might have already been planning to be built all-electric. Staff hosted a developers' roundtable on September 26 on Zoom to get feedback on the energy performance REACH code approach, and there were six attendees, including five developers and one real estate agent. And the top concern really wasn't related to the energy performance margins themselves, but rather the requirements related to electric readiness. Then there were some project-specific concerns. One developer talked about the liability of electric-powered space conditioning for life sciences buildings. And then another developer said that they're building already plans to be all-electric except for the potential use of gas in the retail space for commercial kitchens. It's much more difficult to understand trends for single-family and duplexes. In residents at large, we're not the target of staff's outreach for a couple of reasons. One, I want to emphasize that this REACH code only impacts new construction, and so it's a very hard target to demogra, it's very difficult to target the specific demographic because we also don't have the same builders or contractors building all of our residential projects. And it's really individual property owners' personal preferences that will dictate a project. It's always been hard to engage the community more broadly on new construction REACH codes because it impacts such a small number of property owners. And so I think it's important to note that in the past code cycles where we've had REACH codes related to new construction, we haven't received a ton of feedback there. In terms of timeline, if the city council is interested in this replacement REACH code, staff would need to bring an ordinance to council for consideration very swiftly, since, as I mentioned, there isn't much time left of this current code cycle. And then process-wise, after an ordinance is adopted by city council, it then needs to be filed and approved by the California Energy Commission, and then filed with the Building Standards Commission. So there's a bit of lead time needed before implementation can actually take place. But I also want to mention that staff is very, very familiar with this process, so it is doable. Alternatively, the city can opt to defer exploration, adoption, and implementation of new REACH codes until the 2025 code cycle. So this code cycle will start January 1, 2026, and last through December 31, 2028. Deferring to the 2025 code cycle would reduce the administrative work associated with REACH code adoption. And then on the slide, I've laid out what staff plans to do in terms of 2025 code cycle REACH codes regardless. So typically, staff aims for REACH code ordinance adoption concurrent with that building code update, and that building code update or adoption usually occurs in fall 2025. And so robust REACH code analysis and engagement really starts in spring and summer of next year. And then we're already monitoring what REACH codes we could potentially look at as draft code language becomes available from the state. And Taylor just mentioned that some final language is available related to the Energy So this concludes my presentation tonight, and I'll leave you with the slide of the questions where staff is looking for our specific feedback and direction.
Thank you both of you very much. It is a complex topic, but an important one, so thank you for bringing it before us. City Clerk, do we have any public comment requests?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, I have one request to speak in chambers. And if you wish to speak on this item and you're participating remotely, please raise your hand now. Madam Mayor, that's one request to speak, so that'll be three minutes.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. It's always a privilege to say that the city of San Mateo and council and staff are to be congratulated for exceptional leadership in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Powerful results have been delivered through strong action on electrification of both new and existing construction. I want to underline existing construction because I didn't hear it mentioned yet. Unfortunately, and with no other staff, no other choice, staff did have to suspend enforcement of the strong REACH codes that were adopted way back in October of 2022. But tonight, you have an opportunity to show even more leadership. To begin, I agree with what the staff is saying, that the second page of the staff report and the energy performance model will result in some decrease in emissions from new buildings. But this is the point. It's a small savings, rather than elimination of all emissions from extracting, delivering, and burning natural gas reduces those emissions by 100%. Because eliminating gas from the home and the street for new and existing buildings is the keystone, some Bay Area cities such as Campbell are pursuing a zero NOx ordinance to ensure the health benefits are observed. I believe this to be a wise course of action that I think the city should take immediately, as it dovetails well with the upcoming rule amendments approved by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. The point is here is that we can support BACMID by stopping a strong code here that eliminates gas. The BACMID NOx standards would accomplish 100% elimination of emissions from water heaters and furnaces for both new and existing buildings. The recommendation is to encourage BACMID to do this, but continuing city council leadership. A final thought is, well, I respectfully request, then, that we defer further consideration of all electric REACH codes, the performance model, and energy performance REACH codes for new construction until the 2025 building code cycle, dovetailing nicely with what BACMID is doing, supporting what they're trying to do, and give them further impetus to adopt the full standards. Support and encourage BACMID's NOx standards, pursue a zero NOx ordinance similar to Campbell's, while meanwhile indicating the city's willingness to smooth the path for building permit approvals for electrification. And finally, please reengage RINCON consultants to finish the city's sustainable building strategy. And finally, I'll add too, don't forget about existing buildings. Thank you.
City Clerk, can we ever ask someone who's come up and made a public comment about a question? Or is that not appropriate?
You can briefly respond or briefly ask for a clarification, but I think the idea of public comment is that it's not intended to be an extended place for conversation.
I will hold off on that. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comment?
We have no further requests to speak.
All right, thank you. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to council for questions and comments. Councilmember Lorraine, please.
Thank you to the mayor, and thank you very much, Andrea and Taylor, for your presentation. I am going to start by asking, did this come before the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission?
No, due to the sensitivity in the timeline of the ability for council to adopt an ordinance quickly, this was unable to go to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission prior to this meeting.
I see. That's unfortunate. Thank you. I do have a couple, at least a couple, questions. I guess first I will unfortunately start by asking Andrea if you could please maybe repeat what you mentioned about the timeline for going ahead with bringing an energy performance REACH code ordinance, and whether it would conflict with the 2025 code cycle in any way.
Sure. If the council was supportive of seeing the energy performance REACH code, staff would have to move very swiftly to put together an item. We would be relying on a template that Peninsula Clean Energy has developed, and that other cities that I mentioned who have adopted an energy performance REACH code, that would be the starting point. After an ordinance is introduced, and then there's a second reading, then there's a filing with the California Energy Commission and getting on their board calendar for approval, and then filing with the Building Standards Commission for final approval. So there's just some steps to take before a city is allowed to implement. It just, there's multiple approvals. And then this isn't, I think your second part of your question was the impact to future REACH code analysis. So these efforts are separate and could exist without impacting each other. So if directed to do so, staff could move quickly on an energy performance REACH code now. And then regardless, looking at 2025 code cycle REACH codes is a priority for spring and summer. And that will be before the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and before the public for a typical engagement process.
Excellent, thank you. And we heard from a public comment, and, you know, tonight, and an email about a zero NOx REACH code. And could you speak a little to whether that was considered for this 2022 code cycle amendment or update? If not, why not? And maybe, is that something that you're, you may, we may consider as a council for the 2025 code cycle?
Sure. For the 2022 code cycle, again, I'm stressing this really tight timeline that we have. Staff brought forward the approach that was most legally defensible. And so an amendment to the Energy Code, or a REACH code, is a very legally defensible approach to regulate energy efficiency. We've actually done so in the past to encourage electric buildings. That was the first approach San Mateo took to encourage electric buildings, was requiring higher efficiency for mixed-fuel buildings. So that was the approach that was brought forward and explained today. Opening up the discussion to other approaches, I think, would take more evaluation. And so other options could be considered for the 2025 code cycle, but kind of of urgent need to bring something forward for the 2022 code cycle. Staff is bringing something that is the most legally defensible.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm just going to check to see if I forgot any other questions that I thought were important. And seeing none, I'm going to try to give some comments to wrap up. Frankly, I strongly support council bringing an energy performance REACH code ordinance to a future council meeting to replace the city's currently suspended new construction all-electric RECODE for the 2022 code cycle, as opposed to deferring. And I'm going to take a moment to explain why. I mean, I think firstly, as Andrea mentioned in her response to my question about bandwidth and timelines, these are, these seem to be two separate programs, projects, if you will. So I think it sounds like we have the resources to both have an update and then separately have another code cycle REACH code discussion. That discussion might involve something like a zero NOx option, we don't know yet. But I don't think that should preclude us from considering an update for this next year. And I think that this next year may actually be very important. Because if Measure T passes, then we may see some renewed interest in development in our city. A number of buildings may be considered for new construction. We may see a number of new designs. And, you know, like more than we've seen in the last four to five years. So I think having a replacement code that seeks to put us back to what we had already passed earlier with community feedback, with consideration from those in the industry, with help from consultants and Peninsula Clean Energy, is most in line with the city's goals and values with regard to reducing emissions in our climate action plan. And I think, you know, we are, we have been put in an unfortunate position due to this court decision, in which we effectively need to change what, how we enforce building code, whether we adopt an amendment or not, right? So if we choose to defer to the next code cycle, I think, just responding to some comments I think we got about the awkwardness of needing to change the rules multiple times in a short timeframe, I don't think can be avoided. We have decided not to enforce our previous REACH code at this time. We would have to revert to the 2022 building code cycle, and Taylor had a slide on that that I think gave a pretty good example of what we're looking at. With 2022, if we defer and don't adopt an update, it seems that, you know, buildings, new construction that have electric space heating, in fact, could I ask Taylor, would you mind going back to that slide? I think it was very instructive. I know we got a lot of material, but there was one slide that I think showed the, like, gas and electric heating with a zero score from source energy versus a 9 and 13 score. I feel like this, yeah, gave us the best example of what we're really talking about tonight. So if we don't, if we defer and we don't go for a, an amendment, an update to our code, the left is what we, I think, can expect more often than not as being presented to us. Electric space heating and gas-water heating, mixed fuel. And this amendment gives developers, people, a choice. They can opt for, they can continue to opt for mixed fuel if they feel it's in their interest, with some increased efficiency or solar and battery storage, and at a rate that's still deemed to be cost-efficient, cost-effective. Or they could opt for all-electric, which is what we were aiming for with the previous code. That is still an option, and as Taylor showed in a previous slide, from a cost perspective, it was generally more affordable than the mixed-fuel option, so mixed fuel option. So people may end up opting for that more than the mixed fuel option as a result to save cost and thereby reduce emissions. I feel that that is, that's most in line with what we were pursuing before. Andrea mentioned in her report, and I think to some extent in the presentation, that that is what we're learning from the now finalized 25 cycle, the best ramp toward what we can expect when we have our next conversation. So for those reasons, I strongly support going for an amendment and appreciate the other council's time. And thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges, would you like to go next?
I have, actually, the Berkeley decision really hit me. My original feeling was it just focused on gas stoves. And so the questions I have for you, how is this going to affect, since this was a localized decision, but of course the Ninth Circuit refused to hear it, so it's the law of California. But how's this going to affect the state codes?
So as a local amendment, the city's reach code has to be more sustainable than the base energy code and also cost effective. So what would be enforced here in the city of San Mateo if adopted would be our local regulation with the energy performance margins in place. And again, it's meeting the criteria required by the state to be a reach code where it's more sustainable. You can't adopt something that's less sustainable than the state code. You have to go above and beyond, thus the term "reach." And also to be approved by the Energy Commission, it has to meet cost-effective criteria, which Taylor touched on.
So then it seems to be obvious then we'd better offer their own codes than really on state codes.
So reach codes really allow cities to be local leaders on this. And I mean, what we see in the state of California is more ambitious energy codes each code cycle. And California is a leader in our country, for sure, when it comes to building codes. But we also see cities and counties that are really ambitious on their climate goals and see the opportunity to really push the envelope to require even more sustainable construction.
So the last 45 years, I've lived in an all-electric home. And I chose that home because of earthquake fires through natural gas explosions, which was the greatest destroyer of homes in the San Francisco earthquake. So I think these codes, I was very happy about them, first of all, from a safety view. Natural gas can be very, very dangerous. So I would like to move forward with these codes. I really support everything that Councilmember Lorraine said. I think he's right, spot on. And I just think it's unfortunate that what we're having to deal with now. So my, my choice would be to, to go forward because I don't see a plus in waiting. In fact, our hands would be fairly tied in the very near future if we don't do this. Is that correct?
If we don't adopt a replacement reach code, we would be unable to enforce our current reach code. And so again, just defaulting to the 2022 energy code.
And again, I think that Councilmember Lorraine's very right. I said some time ago that I think things are getting ready to break, both in sales of properties and I think also in development. So I think it's good to go forward with this now.
If I can chime in here briefly. So the Ninth Circuit decision from 2023, it's a federal court of appeals decision, so applies to California and many other states. So the state of California, just like the city of San Mateo, is subject to that decision. Having said that, the city of San Mateo can adopt a local code that builds on the state code and deviates it from that based on local findings, as all local, as many local jurisdictions do. So that, that procedure is still available and it can be done through a mid-cycle code amendment. State law does not prohibit that. And the cities that our sustainability analyst mentioned have done that. There have been some local jurisdiction that have proceeded with a mid-cycle code update. But I just wanted to make it clear that whether it's state of California or counties or city of San Mateo, they're all subject to the holding of this Ninth Circuit decision. So we have to operate within those limits.
Do you know if the state has plans to, to affect their codes to comply with the Berkeley decision?
Well, I think I could return to Andrea and Taylor, these first names, to speak to what the state of California plans for the next energy code cycle. But the reasoning of the court decision was that federal law, federal statute preempted local codes that ban natural gas infrastructure. So it wasn't the entirety of the city's reach code that was suspended. It was only that, it's only a certain portion of it, only certain provisions that prohibited the installation of natural gas infrastructure that was suspended, not the entirety of our reach codes.
That was actually what I was getting at with my questions about what percentage of this did we get hit with? Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, the attorney, real fast?
Prasanna, is a zero NOx reach code legal? I mean, I kind of, I'm trying to fathom how it would be possible if you, if the basis of why our reach codes have been suspended is that we, you know, we're required to be able to allow people to still have gas in their homes. How would you, if you have gas in your homes, is it possible to still, you know, to have a NOx, a NOx, zero NOx reach code even in place? I mean, I-
Well, I think your question is, I think, maybe part legal and part, there's an engineering answer to that perhaps. But I think the idea here is that if you have an incentive-based approach that local jurisdictions are enacting as opposed to an actual ban on natural gas infrastructure, that, that's the difference. So it wouldn't actually prohibit the use of gas infrastructure, I think, and this is where you both can chime in. It would set targets and it would leave it to the developer, the builder, the homeowner to decide how to meet those targets. Because the court decision essentially said that a federal law prohibited local jurisdictions from prohibiting, say, gas appliances or gas infrastructure. And I won't get into the details of the reasoning, but that was the essence of the decision. So if instead of a prohibition, it's just an incentive-based approach, you know, that's the distinction. And perhaps, yeah, there's things to add to that.
Yeah. So if I'm understanding the question, it's about the zero NOx legality. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak to the legality, but I can speak to the technical aspects that the city attorney was alluding to. So as he mentioned, for the CRA versus city of Berkeley ruling, that was based on federal preemption of the Energy Policy and Conservation Act, which is a federal policy that regulates appliance efficiencies. So there was some debate over if you're saying you can't install natural gas appliances at all, is that impacting the efficiency in some way? And the Ninth Circuit made their ruling based on that. The zero NOx approach is kind of operating on a different basis. So it's looking at the federal air quality standards and the California state air quality standards as well. So in the Bay Area, the air quality is reaching non-attainment in several of those standards, such as ozone and particulate matter. So that would be why there's a little bit of a different consideration there. It would really be looking at regulating NOx, which contributes to the creation of ozone and particulate matter, as opposed to looking at any sort of appliance efficiency.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Well, I want to applaud staff for bringing this forward. It shows great leadership and responsiveness from our city staff, who I think have really embraced the demand coming from the community to be leaders in sustainability and also strong direction coming from previous councils and this council as well. And so, you know, what I see, what I see this opportunity is a, you know, is a way to, to create a legally defensible strategy as a stopgap. And I thought it was a little bit confusing from the AR, which framed it as an either/or. But what I hear today is that we can do both, right? That we can pursue reach codes in 2025 and we can pursue the stopgap measure. For me, the advantage of doing, doing this as quickly as possible is that, you know, as Councilmember Lorraine spoke to, this is one of the most critical windows, right? We know based on previous cycles that there's going to be likely, very likely, a surge in applications before the end of the cycle. And this happens to be in a very important election cycle with, you know, the opportunity to overturn extreme limitations on height and density that have hamstrung our city for decades. So the development opportunity that is presented to us in this moment and the reasons to build up our capacity to better regulate our reach codes and enforce them, I think are only a benefit. We know where the state is going. We know what the end goal is, which is to develop the highest capacity from, from the city's perspective and the, and the market perspective and also the community education perspective to go all-electric. That's the future. And the way that we set ourselves up to do that now incrementally and pursue this in 2025, I think will put us in a much better place. And it keeps us on the edge of, on the forefront of leadership as we have been in previous cycles. And so I'm, I think that, you know, this is a win all around. I, I'm glad that we have the bandwidth to do it and appreciate Andrea for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Just a clarifying question. The 2025 code cycle starts on January 1st. So what we're talking about is, sorry.
January 1st, 2026.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, so we have 13 months is what we're looking at for the stopgap, right?
Correct.
Okay. I support it. I think we should move forward and try to come up with some interim fix. That's it. Thanks.
Great. Just getting down to the actual time, right? And you went through all those steps. And that sounded to me like it was a very long time to go through all those agencies. Are we talking, best guess that if we said go tonight, you would get everything written and through the approval hoop by June? Or would it be longer?
Oh, I would aim for earlier than that. I would expect a three to four month process.
Okay, to go through everything you said we had to do?
Yes.
Okay. So that would give us six, seven, eight months before the new code comes in?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of transitioning, I heard like my fellow council members that you can do the, you can do this and the new codes. I'm assuming that one of the, if my fellow council members are correct and there is an uptick for whatever reason in applications, that this would at least enable them to plumb and get ready for whatever comes next. Whereas if this didn't happen, then we would still be back in 2022 and they could choose to do things that would not necessarily be in compliance of 2025 if we think it's going a lot more electric.
Yeah, what you're referring to is some of the electric readiness requirements that are included in the energy performance approach. So this, this approach includes two things, the performance metrics, which require a compliance margin, and then some electric readiness components to really future-proof our new buildings for requirements that are coming down the line. The previous slide about kind of the region and the state, I hope helps contextualize the, what California is looking towards in terms of electric equipment.
Okay. So that's helpful. Thank you very much. And when you were talking to the developers, or even before that, when you were, there was no SNI and there was no sort of community, right? So we're sort of going based on past, we think they felt this way. And so we don't feel absolutely, without any basis, of going forward.
Yeah, I'm acknowledging that my outreach was focused on the developing, developer community, who I know this will indeed impact. It is much harder to target the property owners who do intend to have new builds in San Mateo over the course of the next year. It's a, you know, a smaller number of projects because new construction represents a smaller percentage of the residential activity that's happening in San Mateo. But yeah, I'll emphasize, the, the reach code that was in place was more restrictive, right? It was an all-electric requirement for all new buildings. And what's before you or what the energy performance approach is, it's providing options for builders.
Okay. And when you spoke to, so that's helpful, thank you. When you spoke to the developers, I saw in the report that there wasn't one developer who said yay. Can you give us a little more flavor? You did a little bit in the presentation, but in particularly the difficulty they're going to have to go through with having this and then whatever comes in 2025. And so they'll, and I'm certainly not a developer, but I'm assuming that any applications they put through in 2025 before the new code, in this, if we adopt this interim, then they're just going to have to compartmentalize and say, this project, here are the standards. And then if they come through with a project in January or February 2026, whatever the new codes are, then they're going to have to say, okay, here's what I'm doing with this. So it's going to be an administrative headache for them.
So the developers and our builders are used to tracking code changes. And that's why I mentioned there's generally an uptick at the end of three-year cycles.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're very-
And then I'll speak to your, your question about the poll. So we held a developer roundtable where six people attended in the developer community, five identified themselves as developers and one as a real estate agent. So, you know, six is a very small sample size. I'll mention that. There were 40 who were invited on the list and six people attended. And of those six, then four people took our Zoom survey. And the survey simply asked, are you supportive, neutral, or not supportive of the energy performance approach? And Mayor, you mentioned that two responded neutral and two responded not in support. And I think unsurprisingly, developers are not necessarily supportive of additional regulations in the community because they, they have to then track and comply with different regulations in the different communities that they work in. So I was unsurprised by that result of the survey. I will say I did not receive further feedback from others that we, I didn't receive other comment letters. And I reached out to this, this group of 40 multiple times prior to this meeting.
Okay. Well, they had an opportunity, right? Have we, are any of the other cities who have passed the incentive-based, are, do we have any, do they have any experience or is it all so recent that we really can't learn from what they've done?
That's a good question. So there are a lot of cities who have adopted in this 2024 timeframe, so in March and June. But I reached out to San Luis Obispo, who adopted in September of 2023. So they've seen implementation probably just for this, this year in 2024. They reported that implementation is going fine, emphasizing that there's no additional burden on staff for enforcement, as Taylor mentioned, kind of the forms that applicants are filling out regardless of a reach code in place. They also mentioned that applicants are typically choosing- They also mentioned that applicants are typically choosing to go electric or use electric equipment to comply. But noted that this is less impactful than an outright all-electric requirement. And they have not received negative feedback from the development community. And I think partly he attributed this to the fact that this is a less restrictive approach. So they were previously before that considering an all-electric requirement and then was tracking the Berkeley litigation and then pivoted to this approach.
Okay, great. And so San Luis Obispo is really the one who's been out long enough that there is some learning.
There's also San Jose and Santa Cruz who have now been enforcing. San Jose has been enforcing for about the same time as Slow. We've reached out to them to ask how it's going and I don't think we've heard anything one way or another, kind of neutral. So no clear update on them. For Santa Cruz, they've been enforcing closer to, I want to say, five or six months now. And they haven't seen any issues with enforcement.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And let me ask the two of you a question that I was earlier thinking about asking an audience participant. Why would people, I was frankly surprised by a number of the emails that we got, email public comment from people who typically I would have thought would have been much more supportive of this interim recommendation. And the emails, as I read them, was, let's just do nothing and wait until the new code comes in. Help me understand why that might be. I was surprised.
From the public comment, it seems that there was a little bit of interest in the zero-knox approach. So maybe more support of a different approach than what's before you in this report. And then the other was, I mean, I apologize if my report was confusing that this would impact the ability to look at 2025 code cycle, reach code. So if that was considered a trade-off, that it is not. So I hope that is clarified tonight.
Okay, great. So yeah, I also support what you're doing because I think it's important. We do need to move forward. But I would say we've got to put so much more effort into working with the community, with the developers, because there is, there's going to be so much confusion and work with the other cities where this is being, has already been implemented to say, how do we do this? Because this is going to be a big bump in the road, no matter what happens, even if we all want to get there and we know it's going to be a little bit bumpy. So let's try and do everything we can to learn from others and make this as unbumpy as possible, I guess would be the unscientific way of putting it, and really learn from it. We all know that we want to get to the big goal. But I just, I don't want, I want as much positive feeling about what we're trying to do as opposed to, oh, they're just throwing another set of regulations on us. Oh, my goodness. So, and then also educate us as we go through. I'd love to learn how this is working out because I think it's a very creative approach to both trying to advance our goals as well as recognizing we have to legally do things. So I think it's a great approach to do that. And I particularly appreciate to Councilmember Lorraine's perspective of if there is more development, I want to make sure everybody is plumbed for the future. So, thank you and thanks for answering all my questions.
All right, thank you.
So I think we have a, do we need to take a vote? No?
No, we have the direction we need. We'll be bringing back an item for introduction of an ordinance.
Okay, great. Well, then, thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation and for answering all our questions. I'm sure we will have many more as we go forward. Okay, so let's move on to reports and announcements. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Hedges.
Yes. I would like to report on a very joyous occasion that happened on Sunday.
Excellent.
Mayor Nash took a proclamation to the Hillsdale United Methodist Church, congratulating them on their 75th anniversary in our community. A church that was, the nails were driven on by the participants at that time in doing the church. As common in the old days, the church was begun with home church meetings. Plans were laid to raise the church. And over a period of years between 1947 and 1956, a very large portion of the property was converted to a church. And I was particularly happy to see Councilmember Lorraine there as well. We had an excellent lunch and a lot of community spirit. And just to report, since I'm so high on this church, since I attended, that this church has been very active. We actually have the honor of being picketed by the Phelps family from Kansas, who have picketed everything from national funerals of military heroes to churches that participate in supporting gay and lesbian people. And my minister at that time, before marriage was legal, had participated in a union between two people of the same sex. It was a hard road for the Phelps family because they showed up at the time. Our Tongan members have their church and the Tongan members objected and they left. So there's reasons for that. And so our church has been very active in feeding the hungry. We have a daycare center and we also tutor grade school children in classes they're having problems with. So it's a very active church in the community. It's done a lot to keep our, help our community grow and been active in the spiritual lives of our community members. And I'm very prejudiced about this because I've been a Methodist since 1945.
I think that's a wonderful prejudice.
The only other thing I'd like to talk about, I was a little surprised that even though I didn't get an email in my city email, I got an email in my local email saying that there was a negative declaration going forward on the bespoke project, which is a block square project in downtown San Mateo. And I don't think any development on any issue that's coming forward should be done on a negative declaration for a project that size. And I think it should come before the city council. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Well, one more thing. I'll be taking a trip tomorrow down to San Jose for the Silicon Valley presentation on the local polling for our communities. That's it.
Look forward to you bringing back information for all of us. Councilmember Lorraine?
Sure, thank you through the mayor. I have a few updates. I'll try to make them brief. I did have the opportunity to participate in a homelessness update from the county with County Executive Mike Cowagie and his team from Ilana Rodriguez on down in the Human Services Agency. I was accompanied, I was there with Councilmember Hedges and a number of other council members from our cities. And it was just great to hear all aspects of what the county is doing to try and get us to functional zero homelessness. Some good updates, I feel, are coming in 2025. More funding, a more consolidated approach. Counts that go beyond the once every two-year count and keep track of folks where they find themselves around the county so that services can be rendered more quickly and expeditiously and more. I did have a Rethink Waste Board meeting since our last council meeting. There were some compensation applications for Recology and those who work at the Recology Recycling Center approved. There will be next steps with regard to 2025 rates that will come before council later. So we can look forward to that. But what I wanted to highlight from that meeting was an acknowledgement of a partnership between the city and Rethink Waste to educate folks on diversion in our pedestrian mall, which is now there in the form of nice new triple-bin setups. They look great. If you haven't seen them yet, check them out. And I was speaking with our downtown coordinator, Lance, earlier at one of the many, many awesome downtown events we've had lately. And he remarked that the diversion is going well. One of the concerns about expanding a three-bin system into our parks and other public spaces is that if unattended and folks don't pay enough attention, they might contaminate the bins and it's not really worth it for us to bother. But so far, so good at the Ped Mall. So thanks, everybody, for paying attention and trying their best. And I think I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee?
Yes, I wanted to let everyone know I had the pleasure of joining the NPH Affordable Housing Conference on Friday. And I forgot to ask, Alex, did we have any staff there this year?
I'm not sure.
I don't think so. I ran into staff from Santa Clara, from Berkeley, Oakland, and Cupertino. It's a great place to learn and a great opportunity. I would love to see San Mateo representing and out in spaces where affordable housing leaders are. It's, you know, we're always looking to, as a council, looking to our city staff to bring back knowledge about best practices. And I would love to see staff represented in those spaces. The other thing is I happened upon our friends at St. James. And, you know, as council knows, we generously granted forgivable loan of $175,000 to support their pre-development costs to build affordable housing units for foster youth on their site. And they're actually working with an affordable housing developer that's also doing a similar project in San Leandro. And they've had some interesting sort of parallel experiences with the project where it seems like in San Mateo, they're running into a couple more roadblocks than they are in San Leandro. And so I flagged that because, you know, this is, this is a really important project that the city is already invested in. And the ways that we can support them to be successful and move that project along, I think is really, you know, is going to bring a marquee affordable housing project to our city. And I would love to see us supporting them and proactively engaging them. See how we can be the shining example like San Leandro is. And then, and then lastly, you know, I look forward to our conversation with our Community Development Director about, to learn more about what's going on with our discretionary process for, you know, ADUs. Your staff report indicated that it seems like a significant portion of our discretionary applications are diverted away from the discretionary process into the ministerial process or then abandoned. That, to me, is an indication that our discretionary process is, you know, that people are falling down in that process. If it's, if we're, if they're not, if they're actually not able to, if they're choosing not to pursue it because it's become so hard. And so I want to continue to acknowledge that I hear from multiple community members that have thought about going through discretionary processes and then abandoned it, including our own city council member, sitting, our deputy mayor, sitting right here, and then other people that have actually gone through the process and then abandoned it, and then other people that are still stuck there. And so this is definitely a, an area of improvement that I want to flag.
So looking forward to engaging, having a conversation between the Community Development Director, myself and the Assistant City Manager and you as well. I just want to be very clear so the council and the community knows that the ADU discretionary process, when you look at the data itself out of the last three years, the discretionary applications have been 16 out of the 289 total ADU applications the city has received. That makes up 5% of the total applications for ADUs. I still hear you completely and acknowledge that and happy to have that dialogue at the same time. But I want to put it in perspective of we're doing a really good job too, just on ADUs overall. It's great to see the number of units, you know, the applications that we've had so far. And I believe when I was looking at the last check, we'll have about 65 to 70 ADUs come online this year being approved. And then previous years, they were at about 75 or even 85 ADUs. So we'll have that discussion.
And I appreciate the additional framing and context that, you know, this is a narrow scope in relative to the entire housing production represented by, you know, in that ADU space. However, in neighborhoods like District 2 and District 3, where there's really significant constraints and a high need to produce off-street parking, a lot of ADU projects that are falling down are those that are proposed to be built on top of garages. And that specific sort of, you know, design category, I think, is very important. It's very important to, to critical transit-adjacent districts in, you know, in the city. And so while I totally appreciate that, you know, the point that you're making that it is a fractional percentage, it is still an important percentage in terms of the location that we're representing. It's adjacent to transit and the absolute dire need to produce off-street parking. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, for calling me out too. I've tabled my ADU, but I'll be, I'll be back. We had a really great weekend with a ton of great events, successful events. The Pink Patch Party went really well. Our open house for the fire, as you guys heard, we had over 1,500 participants. Unbelievable and so well organized by the fire department in that they had people come in 30-minute windows. And so, I mean, it didn't feel like at any one point in time there was 1,500 people there. It felt like there was a reasonable amount, but the demonstrations were great. I missed my nephew and my brother-in-law, but I got pictures that the kids just had a great time and I had a great time as well. There is another Pink Patch event this coming weekend, so I'll put that out there. It's Comedy Night and Raffle, Jokes for the Jugs, Laughter is the Breast Medicine. It's Saturday, October 12th, starting, doors open at 6:15, show at 7:00.
Christine is going, yes.
No? All right. Well, I encourage everybody to get out there for that. Another thing that just kind of popped up was that Eaze, one of the largest cannabis dispensaries, the dispensary or delivery companies for the Bay Area, has announced today that they're going to be winding down their operation and closing. One of the things that we talked about, I think, the end of last year, maybe the beginning of this year, was that even though we don't have marijuana dispensaries in the city of San Mateo, we do have marijuana and, you know, being, and cannabis dispensaries being delivered into the city of San Mateo. So I was curious if we could bring that back to looking at, if we are collecting tax revenue from the dispensaries that are delivering to San Mateo? It's point of sale? Oh, really?
So what happens is it's typically the point of sale. And from my recollection, unless you have your own special tax within the city, that's where you can actually capture in the sales tax that's being produced.
It's not like Amazon? No? Okay.
It's like pizza. You go get to Pizza Hut outside of, right? You order your Pizza Hut in a different city?
All right, never mind. Thank you for the answer.
But you need a business license, I believe, to operate within the city. So that's a separate item that we can scan for and ask our sales tax consultant or our business license consultant to take a look at. I'm happy to just follow up with a question too.
I'm happy to just follow up with a question too, but my understanding.
You know, the other law that's going to be changing is that they're going to be allowed to serve food and non-alcoholic beverages in the new year. And so, again, that might be something that we.
At cannabis clubs, right?
Yes.
Or dispensaries.
Dispensaries, yeah. Thank you, appreciate it. Oh, can I do one more?
Yeah, sure.
I don't know if my mother-in-law is still watching, but happy, happy birthday, Hilda, and thanks for sticking with us.
Happy birthday, Hilda. And I appreciate you trying to find revenue opportunities wherever you can. So thank you very much for that. I wanted to start off by commending city staff across many, many departments for really helping to make all these events. We have been just chock-a-block with events all over San Mateo all month. And from Parks and Rec to the city manager's office, to public works, to fire and police, everyone has just gone above and beyond. And they really should be acknowledged because I think everybody knows I am all about activating our downtown and getting everyone to come down and effort to be a wonderful, wonderful, vibrant place to help our businesses and build community. But we can't do that without all the staff that make it successful. And that extends to the DSMA and to the Chamber. So just big thank you. And I also wanted to say thank you for all the great new furniture down on the Ped Mall. Congratulations. We've been getting lots of very, very positive feedback. And whenever I walk down there, it, it, they're always full, even if there's nothing else going on anywhere else, people are sitting there. And I think Somi Somi really owes you a debt of gratitude because all, everybody's eating Somi Somi there. So that is wonderful. And coming up on the 26th of October, of, it's, you know, it's a little bit early now, but wanted to get the word out, from 3:00 to 5:00 is going to be Booze on B Street, B-O-O apostrophe S. And that is, we had it last year, it was an incredible success. So everyone get ready, come on down, wear your costumes. You know, it's, it's good, there's going to be, I think, a reptile scary petting zoo. So, oh, all sorts of interesting, fun things there. And then two requests I would ask of my fellow councilmembers, if there is interest in bringing back, probably next year, is our items on both leaf blowers and short-term rentals. Because we, you know, we debated, we talked about them, you know, a year ago. We put in, you know, sort of a pilot program in terms of incentives on leaf blowers. And we put in initial regulations for short-term rentals. And I think in the, in the new year, when there is an opportunity, I would love to have staff give us reports on both of these programs. You know, what's going on with the, the incentive? I know it's been successful. Do we want to move forward with it, given what's, you know, the banning of sales of new leaf blowers in, at the state level? I know there's still lots of loopholes in that. And then in terms of short-term rentals, I know that complaints about them have come down, but there's still, you know, just what's happening? How well has the program gone and how can we make it even better? So those are two very, very different programs. But from an idea of, you know, we, we have, we're going to have some data in the new year. I'd love to see what it is. So is there any interest among my councilmembers in bringing?
So I want to, I want to jump in here. I think that maybe the most appropriate first step would be for us to provide a report out in a council update or review. I really want to protect this council's time about the policies that we're bringing forward. If we want to move forward, say, with leaf blowers and look at taking that next step, that'd be something that I'd really recommend that it be brought up as part of the Blue Sky Initiative with making sure that we're resourcing it appropriately. The other piece is just even on leaf blowers itself, right now, staff is talking about, there's a $1.4 million grant that the city has received from PCE, which a subset portion of that funding is going to go for the whole leaf blower incentive program to really boost it. And so we're not going to have all that information just yet. But I'm happy to provide kind of just a point in time, being able to capture from the last time the council has discussed both items, just where are we at overall in a written report? And then I would say, if you still would like to move forward, we can have a further discussion as part of the Blue Sky process, especially on the leaf blower piece, because that'll take a little bit more engagement and outreach before we can move forward. The, I totally hear you on the short-term rentals, where we can report out of just how things are working out, how we are enforcing or even regulating the short-term rentals here in our city. So I hear you, I acknowledge it. I think they're just, maybe our first step is providing a report and then we can escalate it from there.
I think it's the information that I'm interested in because I get so many requests from the public. What's happening? Why are we doing this? Why aren't we? And the data would be really helpful. And, you know, if things are, whatever's happening, staff's putting a lot of work into those programs. So I think that should be acknowledged as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, agreement. Yes.
Talking about the booze on B Street reminds me to invite all of you to Harbor Town's Clubhouse on October 31st, when my wife and I will be dishing out ice cream for anyone who likes ice cream and wants to come by.
What flavor?
Usually we do chocolate, vanilla and strawberry, and then I'll have chocolate sauce.
Oh, that's pretty enticing.
So, and the other thing, I just wanted to acknowledge that I was a one no vote on continuing to keep the block between Second and First Street open. And I can see now, after a period of a little over a year, that I was wrong on that and I wanted to acknowledge it. I think it's working quite well.
Make it even better. So that's great. Well, thank you, everyone. I think we are finished and we are adjourned at 9:30.
Madam Mayor, you have one more?
Oh, excuse me. Let me undo that. I apologize. I totally apologize. We are not adjourned. That was my mistake. So before we adjourn tonight's meeting, could you, could you just sit down for a second? Thank you, City Clerk. Before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to recognize that over 500 soldiers from our adopted unit, the 101st Airborne Division Air Assault, left Fort Campbell this past weekend to assist in the response efforts for Hurricane Helene. These efforts are being led by the North Carolina National Guard in coordination with FEMA. These soldiers, known as Task Force Falcon, are equipped with over 60 all-terrain vehicles and are trained for a variety of tasks requested by civilian authorities. They will be involved in critical work such as search and rescue, medical aid, route assessments and clearance, traffic control, supply distribution and debris removal. The city of San Mateo stands so proudly in our support of these brave individuals as they step up to help communities in urgent need. As we commend their bravery and service, we must also pause to mourn the profound loss of over 200 lives to this tragic event, as well as an impending new storm that is barreling up the coast. Our hearts are with the families and communities who are grieving. We offer our deepest sympathies, knowing that no words can fully capture the magnitude of their pain. In this moment, let us come together as a community in solidarity and resolve to continue supporting all efforts to bring relief and recovery to those affected. And if we could take a moment of silence, that would be greatly appreciated. And now let us adjourn in their honor and thank the 101st Airborne Division for their work.
And Florida is racing for another hurricane.
Thank you.